Oh, that's on, that's on.
Ramsey or one of the churches or something?
I don't know.
I don't either.
My granddaughter is trying out for play.
Oh, yeah. I don't know.
Okay, it's seven oh one. You ready, Katie?
Yes.
Nancy? Everybody's ready. Correct?
Ready.
Welcome to Thursday, December first, two thousand twenty-two, City of Manistee Planning Commission Meeting. Please rise for the floor.
Yeah, first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Slawinski? Commissioner Semenski?
Here.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Here.
Commissioner Weiner? Commissioner McBride?
Here.
Commissioner Yoder?
Here.
Chair Whitlam?
Here, thank you. Approval of agenda. At this time, the planning commission can take action to approve December first, two thousand twenty-two agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Shelley, second by Nick. Any discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I actually did have an amendment to the agenda if I could. The street vacation request that you guys approved last week, there was, it's more so a formality that I can get into when we get to that item, but I would like to act that under old business, please.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
So I make a motion that we approve the agenda with the
Amendment.
Amendment to street vacation under old business.
Okay, good.
Second.
Second. Discussion? None? Sure? Okay. Please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitlam?
Yes, thank you. Conflict of interest? Is there any commissioner that has any conflict with tonight's agenda?
None.
Please raise your hand. None? Okay.
None.
We don't need a roll after that, do we?
Don't, do we?
No.
Okay, great. I think I knew that. Approval of minutes. At this time, the planning commission can approve the November third, two thousand twenty-two meeting minutes.
I make a motion to approve the November third, twenty-two meeting.
Okay. Motion by Shelley, second by Roger. Discussion? None, please take roll.
Commissioner Semenski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride? Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitlam?
Yes, thank you. Correspondence? Any correspondence?
None.
None? Okay. Dark skies presentation by Susan Shakkin?
I don't know. Shakkin.
Thank you.
I don't know if you can see the screen back there where the presentation is at, but my friend here, Brooke Edwards, took that picture with, what, just a regular camera here in Manistee?
Just a regular DSLR camera. It was a long exposure and it said manual second. And pretty much after
International Dark
I was just there last night. Along with the belating of Manistee out towards Stronach area, I was able to capture that. I actually grew up in Philadelphia, so up until I was twenty-seven years old, I had never seen the Milky Way. And that was the effects of light pollution.
Yeah.
Also impacts human health, which I'm sure she'll talk about in her presentation. But I remember one night, I turned off the lights in my house when I was still living in Philadelphia. The whole house was illuminated. And there were no lights on in the house. I go, wow, this is light pollution. This is impacting our quality of sleep, our health. And on top of that, it hit me, I had, I've been a space enthusiast my whole life. I'd never seen the Milky Way. I moved to Manistee, actually down to Stronach. And one night, I get out of the car, I had no idea what to look for. I'd never seen a pure sky before. I looked up and I see this band going across the sky. I'm like, that's a weird cloud. Wait a minute, that's the Milky Way! And I'm twenty-seven years old, never seen it. And as light pollution continues to get worse, they say, according to National Geographic, about eighty percent of Americans have not seen it. And it's gonna keep on getting worse in the future, unfortunately. But there are solutions to it.
We used to see the northern lights. Have you seen the northern lights?
I have not. That's on my
That's another spectacle.
I'm hoping to see them here pretty soon.
Yeah.
Every time it appears, I seem to miss it.
Back in the day, we used to see it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, my presentation is dark skies. Why are they important here in Manistee or actually throughout the whole state of Michigan? I don't know. Yep, okay. All right, so my name is Susan Shakkin. And I have a lifelong passion for the night sky and the sense of awe, beauty, and perspective it brings. I'm advocate for the International Dark Sky Association, Michigan Dark Skies, and startup Dark Skies Manistee. And I spent twenty years in residential remodeling. The reason why I bring that up is because when I'm doing, when I was involved in interior remodeling, part of what I did was lighting plans. The International Dark Sky Association, if you're not familiar with them, but the IDA has been working to protect the night sky since nineteen eighty-eight. Their International Dark Sky Places Program preserves dark sky places for all people. There are now over two hundred IDSPs around the world, including two in lower Michigan. Michigan Dark Skies is a public outreach group based at the University of Michigan. If you ever visit their website, and same thing with the IDA, there is a ton of information there. But they advocate for environmentally aware lighting throughout Michigan that promotes human health and safety, eliminate wasted energy, and to restore the ecosystem. So, my presentation tonight is light pollution. What is it? Why should we care? And what can we do about it? A couple terminology items?
I think this document is not loading the rest of the pages here.
You did, you have PowerPoint?
It did open as a PDF. I can try to open it as a PowerPoint on your Okay, I'm sorry, can I get your flash drive again? Because it's only as a PDF here, so I'll have to use your flash drive again.
Oh, sorry.
Ma'am?
Yes.
While we're talking, while they're talking, are you part of this International Dark Sky Association?
I'm actually not, but I'm planning on joining. What I am, though, is I'm a solar system ambassador, which is a volunteer with NASA's BPL for the Manistee area.
Okay.
Which, yeah, I became involved when I moved to Manistee.
Okay.
I heard about the solar system ambassador program applied and I said, look, Manistee needs some outreach here. And I fortunately got it.
Well, it's on that international, or this dark sky last night, and they're looking for a representative, like probably yourself. You say you're an advocate of this?
I'm an advocate.
And because they're based out of Minneapolis or something?
Actually, the International Dark Sky Association is based out of Arizona.
Okay, and they were looking for individuals to participate in, I guess, this dark sky association, but
Yes, yes, we are always looking for advocates. So, like I said, tonight, my presentation is light pollution. Why should we care and what can we do? But a little bit of terminology is that artificial light at night. A lot of times referred as Allen.
Oh, my gosh.
Go back.
There we go, sorry.
One more. So, artificial light at night is any human generated light that illuminates the nighttime environment. Artificial light at night is a tool that provides many advantages in modern society, but like any tool, it can be used inappropriately. Inappropriate use of artificial light at night causes light pollution. Light pollution negatively infects, or negatively impacts people, planets, animals, and it's growing rapidly. What are the forms of light pollution? It comes as glare, being blinded by light. And I'm sure you probably have experiences just by having headlights affecting you. But it's when light enters our eyes at shallow angles, causing pain and restricting the pupils, reducing visual acuity. Light trespass, which is light falling outside of the property boundary onto another property or home. Sky glow, which you probably have all seen before, especially if you fly, coming into an area. Dome of brightness on the horizon that obscures the view of the night sky caused by misdirected light scattering throughout the atmosphere. And of course clutter. Significant amounts of lights throughout a property or in excess of brightness. This next slide shows basically in nineteen ninety-seven is where it's measured. Light pollution nineteen ninety-seven. The nineteen fifty is modeled, nineteen seventy is modeled. What they thought it looked like, if you think about it, if it looked like that in nineteen seventy with the population growth, now we know what it looks like in nineteen ninety-seven. What is it gonna look like in twenty twenty-five? Most importantly, what does it look like here in Manistee? On the left side, we have two thousand and six. And of course, the red is here in downtown Manistee. I basically took a picture of the county. And then we're looking at twenty twenty if we look around the county. The areas that are in the darker gray are more of your darker sky areas. And then, you know, in two thousand and six, you don't have a lot of that. But in twenty twenty, there is basically, it's starting to be eliminated.
Could you go back, Susan, could you go back to that slide, please?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So the red, so if you can see the Manistee River in there? We got the real red there for the, that is the city. In two thousand and six, and then how it's grown in twenty twenty. So if you think about it, what's happened in the last fourteen years? And I would say in the city and then throughout the county.
Yeah.
Could you explain the graph on the bottom, please?
I was gonna ask you how it's determined, how did they?
That's the color, yeah.
Um, there is a website called lightpollutionmap.info. The information is down there in the bottom. That's where I pull the information from. And they take photo images from outer space.
Well, that's what I was going through.
But there are a lot of them from NASA and from other companies, from NOAA.
And that's where these images came from, NOAA?
I don't
Or outer space?
Came from, yeah, I use the Light Pollution Map Info website.
That's what I'm going through, yeah, okay, that's kind of all right.
Now astronomers use what they call a bordal scale to measure a dark sky. So if you think about when you go outside at night, if you look up, what can you see? How many stars can you see? What is the depth of the Milky Way that you could see? Because you should be able to see the Milky Way here in Manistee. But not all areas of Manistee can you see the Milky Way.
Right, right, right.
So when you go outside, you know, is it, do we have a level seven, which is a suburban urban sky? Or are we at a rural sky? What do we have here? And I would ask, what would you like to maintain? Would you want to maintain a rural sky here within the city and the county? And what do we need to do to maintain that rural sky? So, why does light pollution matter? How does it affect us? It affects us from energy waste, we're losing the darkness, our wildlife, cultural heritage, human health and wellness, and environmental justice. Maybe a lot of us have not heard about environmental justice. But environmental justice has to do with urban areas having more light pollution than suburban areas. If you think about it, in the urban areas, you have more streetlights, there's more lights on buildings. People are living under a lighted environment. They don't have a lot of natural darkness. But going into the human health and wellness, again, life has evolved under a natural day-night cycle, and it is dependent on that cycle. The absence of blue light when the sun sets is what signals the body to produce the hormone melatonin. Melatonin tells organs and systems it's time to rest and restore the body. Artificial light at night, especially blue light, disrupts the melatonin production. With the loss of melatonin, sleep and restoration are reduced, leading to long-term health and wellness impacts. If we are exposed to a lot of blue light at night, and this has actually been, there's been some, a lot of research done on this for people who work shift, work, work the midnight hours, they are actually at a higher risk of cancer.
That's right.
And also too, wellness impacts. If we don't have the opportunity to have a rustful environment where we're always exposed to a lot of light, can cause anxiety, bipolar depression. In fact, in twenty sixteen, the American Medical Association declared light pollution a risk to human health. And they have recommended no nighttime exposure to light with a color temperature above three thousand Kelvin. And I don't know what the light temperature is in here or the Kelvin level, but I actually do have some light bulbs I'll hand out afterwards that are below the three thousand Kelvin.
Really?
You'd be surprised how bright they are.
So are there special light bulbs now?
They're not special. They're not special. I'll give them out in
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. Light pollution also affects the ecosystem, it affects the animals, food web distribution, plants. Plants are a lot of times affected by light pollution, especially if they are
The pollution.
Trees are under lights and whatnot, they do not get to experience the day-night cycle, the season changes. So they actually bloom sooner and lose their leaves later. And by doing that, they're actually more susceptible to disease. A lot of bugs and insects are attracted to light, moss being one. Moss are important to the environment because they are also pollinators.
That's true.
Also impacts our fish and amphibians, and Manistee being a large fishing area. Fish frequently migrate and feed at night to hide from predators. Bright lights shining on the water eliminate their protective cover. In rivers where salmon spawn, juvenile salmon can be impacted by bright nighttime lights or reflections on the surface of the water because predation is a major contributing factor to high mortality of juvenile salmon. It reduces the calling behavior and increases movement of male frogs during mating season, reducing mating success. I find this, this information quite fascinating. This is from Birdcast. So, the red line on here actually identifies sunset. So if we look over toward Michigan, we see some arrows in there and we see some colors. And that on this particular day, the thirty-first of August of two thousand twenty-two, at twenty-one hundred hours at night, which is roughly nine o'clock, there are two hundred and fifty-one million birds in flight. And a lot of people think, you know, you see birds fly around during the day and whatnot, but why do they fly at night? They fly at night because the temperature is cooler.
Right.
A lot of our songbirds travel at night. The atmosphere is more stable, so it's easier for them to fly. It's easier to maintain their study course, and they navigate by the stars and moon for navigation. On this particular night, the new moon was on August twenty-seventh. So this was also a dark night. So there wasn't a lot of, you know, there was no moonlight. Birds were navigating by the stars or by the crescent or the moon.
Wouldn't they navigate by the light on the ground?
They do not navigate by the light on the ground.
No?
No. And they navigate more at night because also too, they're now to pray for hawks.
Well, that makes sense, I guess. They can't see them.
This next slide, I also find very interesting, is that this is just Manistee County. So from Manistee County, it shows on this particular night, we're also looking at August thirty-first on the left side. We had a first quarter moon there, but there were one million seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand birds in flight at night through Manistee County. And
Who cares?
The interesting thing is that the birds that fly at night are sandpipers, are orioles. These are all types of birds that fly at night. And we don't necessarily hear them, but there are some special instruments that people use. A lot of times, the Audubon Society listen for the birds to hear them in flight.
Do they pass through, or are they
Passing through Manistee County.
Is that right?
And if you go back, go back to the other side, if you notice their path where the arrow
Where the arrows follow.
They're actually coming across Lake Michigan.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And they're coming here to the shores.
Yeah.
And, you know, Manistee County is such a natural county, you know, we have so much forest. So it's a great habitat for birds. So, also too, light pollution is a waste of money and energy. About thirty-five percent of lighting worldwide is wasted light, shooting straight up into the sky. And when we do the math, we spend about three to seven billion dollars a year on wasted light while adding twenty-one million tons of carbon dioxide to the atmosphere each year. Inspiration. You know, you go outside, you see the dark sky, as Brooke was talking about, and I'll give you my own experience. And this was thirty years ago. My husband and I were vacationing out in northern Maine. We happened to go out to the beach one night, so we're along the Atlantic Ocean. And it was in August, and we happened to look up and, you know, we live in the suburbs. We look up and I have to say, the depth of the sky was so intense. And also too, it happened to be during the August meteor shower, which I don't recall the name of it. Perseus, I think?
Yeah, the Perseus.
Yeah. And we just seen, just, they're just shooting stars like I've never seen before. And, you know, when you see something like that, you're like, wow, you know, there is your awe. Why can't I see this more often? It's just absolutely beautiful. And I'll also say, I did see the northern lights this year. My first time. But when you do see them, it is actually best to see them by, with a camera. Because they are hard to see with the naked eye.
Well, that's why I wear glasses.
Also too, culture loss. The natural sky is a shared universal heritage that brings, that belongs to all people equally. Astronomy has played an important role in early Native American cultures. So if we were to lose ninety percent of the stars because of light pollution, would that be acceptable to us? And I would like to relate that to if we lost ninety percent of our lakes. When we, we do a lot to protect our lakes, we do a lot to protect our forest. But the one thing that really is not being protected is the natural nighttime environment. So astronomy is deeply rooted in human culture and civilization. We use it to know when to plant and harvest, and the stories we told about the constellations, character, history, and culture. Every person has a basic human right to experience an intact ecosystem, including a naturally dark sky. Science to study the universe to further human understanding of physics and the nature of the universe. So, dark skies in Michigan, how does this really relate to us? Earlier this year, April twenty-second, the governor signed a proclamation identifying April twentieth to the thirtieth as Dark Sky Week. She identified that evidence shows the negative effects light pollution has on both the human population and the environmental health as a whole. She identified that inefficient outdoor lighting causes light pollution and obstructs the full view of the amazing Michigan sky and the surrounding environment. And she wants to spread awareness about the growing problem, midlife issues associated with light pollution, and preserve the beauty of our state's environment and night sky. And astro tourism brings awareness to the effect light pollution can have on our state. So stargazing. Part of the Pure Michigan Campaign is stargazing. I don't know if you are aware of that? And we know that tourism in Michigan brings in over seventeen point two billion dollars per year. But for Michigan to identify this as part of their Pure Michigan Tourism Campaign, I think that's pretty important. They do identify the two dark sky parks, which is Headlands and Dr. Lawless up in Man
Mackinac City.
Mackinac, yeah. I have not been there at night, I've been there during the day. But what about all the places in between there? And I know Manistee, in this whole Manistee County area, we have a lot of tourism. Yes. Stargazing or astro tourism is something that can be promoted in the in-between seasons. December is one of the best times to see the Gemini meteor shower that's coming up, and you can probably, I think it's gonna peak on December fourteenth, but the timeframe before and after that. And a lot of times, the best, the best skies to see are winter. And, you know, a lot of sports are, are, a lot of winter sports, you need snow, but stargazing, you don't need snow. We need clear skies. But we, you know, clear skies come and go, just as snow comes and goes.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Now, the county worked with Networks Northwest, and they prepared a countywide park and recreation plan in two thousand twenty-one. And all, this map here, with all these stars on there, are all the sites that have been identified as potential dark sky viewing sites. So, the plan that Networks Northwest prepared was a guide, a policy guide, and decision-making process oriented around recreation within Manistee County. And the city of Manistee, which I love the slogan here, soul of the waters, spirit of the woods. I have to say, I love that slogan.
That might change.
That's actually not a slogan, that's the translation of the word, Manistee.
Yes.
It is. Thank you for sharing that with me. I learned something new. Well, I think, you know, saving our dark skies would fit right in with this. On this map, and when I went through this document, it was identified that North Beach Access has been identified as a potential dark sky viewing area.
I believe that.
And then we need to support the surrounding community. Arcadia Township is promoting, would like to promote, based on the document, promote a dark sky viewing area, potentially addition of an observatory. I think that's pretty ambitious. Bear Lake Township, plan for a recreational development of viestas and sites that may be used for a dark sky park. And Oneecoma Township, promote and provide recreation programming that includes dark sky activities. So all these places need the overall support of the local and neighboring communities for this to really be effective.
But why can't we all work together to make one nice one? I mean, why was Oneecoma need one, or Bear Lake need one, and we need one? Why don't we just, can't we just work together?
It would be nice if everybody could work together.
That's a question for, how was that beat?
Well, that's true.
The silent lady, Susan can answer that. It's a good question.
Yeah, it's a very good question.
But I mean, gee, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry again.
So we know light pollution is a problem, and it is increasing, but light pollution is the only pollution that we can solve at the speed of light. And each individual action makes a difference. We can create changes on a large scale that benefit everyone. So, a simple solution is better lighting design. That better lighting design has four elements: shielding, color, intensity, and warranty. But there is a myth out there that says, that people are saying, more lighting is safer. And based on this picture, when you have a exposed light bulb in a high intensity, and you're walking towards it, you actually end up getting blinded. And if it is very bright, it actually creates dark shadows between different things. And it's actually a place where people can hide. If you go into a softer light and a shield light, it actually gives you better visual acuity. So, shielding, aiming lights down.
Yeah.
You can see the left picture of a bright light, the right picture, lights shield, aiming down.
Shoebox.
Much more, much, you know, nicer on our eyes. And then we talk about the correlated color temperature. As I mentioned before, we have the twenty-seven hundred warm color lights versus going into a bright light of a three thousand, four thousand, five thousand light. Basically, if you're in an operating room, you're gonna want daylight five thousand Kelvin. Maybe in a kitchen where you're working, you're gonna be about a four thousand. But when you're outside, if you're just thinking residential area, parking lot, something at three thousand or less is going to be sufficient for that parking lot. If you want something brighter, maybe thinking about a baseball diamond. If you want something brighter, maybe thinking about a baseball diamond, football diamond, a football field, where things are being played. But if you just need to light a parking lot, we really don't need to light excessively. And the other thing that is important is intensity and warranty. These are often overlooked aspects of lighting. Even if we shield every light, there is still some light reflected up from the ground. To minimize this, use only the amount of light needed for the task at hand. And make sure that light really is needed in the first place. And this has to do with, even though you have a shield light, I would even say like these, if they were brighter, the light would come down and then reflect up. So you got the glare, you creating the sky dome with all this glare going up. And you also have, that happens more with the blue light, because the blue light travels more than a warm light. Lighting ordinances are actually proactive ways. I know Manistee, the city of Manistee has an, has a zoning ordinance, and you also have a outdoor lighting requirements. And I love the pictures here that give people samples, what they should be using. And you also identify that you don't want unnecessarily, you don't want lights that contribute to sky glow, and you want to reduce light pollution. But there are some things that probably could be done within the lighting ordinance to better, to be a little bit more effective on this. Because as I drive through the city, and I don't know, I kind of was trying to pay attention, because I came from the north, identify the city boundaries. But when I got more into the city, I could say, there are some good examples, and there are some bad examples. So I don't know how long you have the lighting ordinance in place, and how well it is enforced. But it should cover everybody, businesses, residential. And the other option is even to identify fixture height in relationship to the structure. I know, I think I read in the ordinance, you had twenty feet as a maximum height. But if the building itself is only at fifteen feet, why do we want a twenty-foot light fixture, when it's going to be shining on the roof, and then reflecting off? And I'm bringing this up because this is what's going on. Another thing would be to encourage businesses to turn off or reduce lighting when closed. Menards does this. Menards, when they're closed at night, they turn off their lights. Like an hour after they close, everybody's left, and maybe an hour before they open, they turn the lights on again. Consumers Energy is piloting smart streetlights in Michigan. I've been in contact with the, there's a very strong group up in Leland and Northport, and they're piloting the smart streetlights up there. The lights are dimmable, and once installed, communities could set timers to adjust the brightness. Different things that are happening. And then the Michigan in our Waterways program, they have identified in their documents that they are going to incorporate dark sky lighting strategies when they're refurbishing their parks and establishing new parks. So where can we find some of this? The International Dark Sky Association does have fixture seal of approval. They do have these at Home Depot, and Menards, and Lowe's. So you can say, you know, maybe on a residential area, you know, we only want IDA-approved fixtures. And then another good resource is the Illuminating Engineering Society. Where you're coming to a commercial development, maybe recommend that they use the guidelines of the Illuminating Engineering Society so that their lighting is falling within dark skies.
Makes sense.
So what else can we do? We can all be proactive. Turn off unnecessary outdoor lighting, keep it warm. Create a committee to talk with residents and businesses. And another option would be to create a program to encourage businesses to implement dark sky-friendly lighting, and maybe have them get a plaque. If they're implementing dark sky-friendly lighting within their business, their parking lot and whatnot, maybe give them a plaque and give them some recognition in the paper. To be proactive on that, and that doesn't really necessarily cost anything to the city. So, I do have some light bulbs.
If I could ask you while you're walking and talking.
Yes.
Are contractors aware of this idea? I mean, if we were to say to a contractor that wanted to build something, we want your lighting by IDA standards. Because do they know what that is?
They should know what that is.
I mean, international daylight.
Yeah, International Dark Sky Association.
Yeah.
If they don't, they, they should investigate it.
Oh.
Okay?
Yeah.
But if they don't, they really should investigate it.
Yeah, okay.
But if you said that, if that was part of your zoning ordinance, and I know I had. I wrote a letter to the, to the city here about the Hampton Inn that's being developed, which I think is. I think it's going to be nice for the, for the city. And when I looked at the lighting plan on that, and I, I'm not a hundred percent sure about this, but I believe that there's lighting at the top of that structure.
Possible.
And the light level that is on the ground for that, which I think is at a four thousand Kelvin. So many light fixtures today are done electronically. So a lot of times, they can tweak those to bring them down, bring them a little bit softer. They still have a very nice lit parking lot.
Ms. Schenken, the good news is, you have some of the people that are right here in the audience.
Oh, really? Oh. There you go. Give them a couple of light bulbs there. Put them in a new hotel or whatever. Yeah, there you go.
So that's all that I have for today. I want to thank you, I appreciate the time here.
So when could we get another picture of the light that we have here in Manistee now? If we wanted to improve things? You know what I'm saying? Like you showed the pictures from the satellites of the color.
Yes.
All right, could we get a picture of, let's say, today or tomorrow? From the satellite of what we look like now, today?
Let me work on that.
I mean, I don't know, if yes, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, let me work on that.
Ms. Schenken, I've got a question.
Yes.
So, you know, again, Manistee, like many communities, are going away from halogen lights to LEDs.
Yes.
Better, worse, or indifferent?
I'm going to say, there's been, there's a lot of research out on that. There's a lot of research being done on that. So they can't, they, I cannot say whether or not an LED in particular is better, worse, or indifferent. What I will say is that since LEDs have come out, I think the color spectrum has really changed. Because when, now that they brought out LEDs, they have become much brighter.
Bluer.
Yes, bluer. And the bluer is much harmful to the environment, to us as living, living things, to animals, insects, everything. My husband works for General Motors, and they've had to do some things with their headlights to adjust them so they are not so bright.
So yeah, I believe that, they were at a time, yeah.
Yes.
But see, when you go to some contractor, somebody comes in, they use the lighting as a safety factor. You know, we don't want any dark corners, we want to have the lighting. So I suppose we'd have to work with somebody, or Katie would, but as far as, like you say, you're dimmer, or how you can adjust it.
Well, what they can do is, if someone's coming in with a project, they should be presenting a light plan, correct? Isometric light plan.
Yeah, yeah, they do.
And so on there, you know where all the, all the lights are going to be. And it'll probably identify the fixture, and it'll identify the lumens, and it'll also identify the color temperature.
All right.
So that's, the lumens will tell you the brightness of how bright this parking lot's going to be.
Yes.
And the color temperature will identify, you know, the, how warm or cool it's going to be. And you could actually put right into your ordinance, saying that, you know, parking lots, we don't want them to be above a three thousand Kelvin.
Right, like it was shown, yeah. You only need a three, for a parking, parking lot compared, okay, yeah, I understand. But then, all right, so you, you're out of here. The project comes into us, are we eligible to read these IDA standards? Can we, can we say each have to have them, or? I don't know, how would we determine, you know what I'm saying?
You can say that. If a project's coming in, and you want, if that's-
We don't know about lighting, is what I'm trying to say. We don't know about lighting.
Right.
That, if you're getting really into it, that may be an instance where you might be able to utilize like the city engineer, potentially some other consultant to come in and help assist with that, if that was a major concern for a project, for a particular project.
That makes sense, okay. All right, sure, go ahead, all right.
Ms. Schenken, part of our problem is that, you know, we're a fairly old community that doesn't change very quickly. So, a lot, a lot of our challenges are, you know, like I said, you know, when you're saying, we have poles that are this high, well, that's because they were built thirty years ago, and the businesses are still there.
Yeah.
It, it's very difficult to go and say, I need everyone to change and, and follow a new standard.
Yes.
Especially in our current financial and economic environment. So, do you have any suggestions on, are there any governmental opportunities for people to pursue dark sky and have some kind of incentive?
That's a very good question. I have not done any research on that, but I can, and I'm willing to. But my feeling on it is, if we don't start someplace, it will never happen.
That's true.
So if you don't start with new developments coming in, it will never happen. And if you start setting this precedent for the new developments, sooner or later, the existing development, they have to do something. They may have to change outer light. And if they are going to change out, out of light, they should put in something that's going to be more environmentally friendly for the overall. And, you know, one by one, it will slowly change. I completely understand what you're saying. You know, it's not something that happens overnight, it's, it's a process. It really is. But a lot of it has to do with, one, educating the community.
No, that's a problem.
You know, it's not just a problem here in Manistee, it is a problem throughout the whole state. But if we don't start somewhere, you know, we'll never see change.
Well, that's true, that's true. Well, we don't want to change real, big change. I mean, you know, we want the soft blue light change, that's the kind of change we want up here.
Soft yellow.
Yes.
I mean, we're getting older up here, so. Thank you very, oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
Are you taking over this meeting right now?
No, I apologize.
Any other questions or concerns?
No, thank you.
Now, have you ever thought about starting a committee to even just go out and talk to business owners? You know, that's part of it, going out and talking to business owners.
Question, I keep bothering, well, what is your cohort? I thought she is part of this.
I just do outreach in the community for NASA, JPL. So I just do outreach, like science outreach. Not really talking to the businesses, but to community members, like I host like star parties, outreach events.
Oh.
Yes.
For science.
Brooke has actually hosted, or trying to host, a couple star parties out at Orchard Beach.
Yeah, Orchard Beach State Park, I had to do in the summer.
I thought, I thought something in the paper about that, yeah.
Yeah, and just the awe and wonder on, even the older people's faces when they see the night sky, the movie with telescope, it's just amazing.
I can imagine.
They want to talk to the well-dressed man over there, who's with the Chamber of Commerce. He might be able to connect you as well.
That would be great.
Or whatever you need, sure, sure.
Well, it's certainly given us a lot to think about. I appreciate it very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
I would just like to add, it just fits in perfectly with the Pure Michigan campaign.
Yep, all right, yeah, it does.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, we will have a go to moving to public hearing. And I will open the public hearing for zoning amendment, removal of parking facility, public. So, Katie?
Yes, so I had posed this to the commission last month. This was something that was actually brought to my attention from, I, Mark Miller and I meet weekly just to keep each other in the loop with upcoming development. And he brought it to my attention that it seemed like this may have been a shortcoming of the ordinance. Public was removed from parking facility in a lot of sections of the zoning ordinance, like three or four districts, and from the definition and the special land use standards back in, I believe it was two thousand ten, if I'm remembering correctly. And there were certain districts where this was not removed. And it, yeah, to me, it seemed like a shortcoming, and I posed it to the commission, and they agreed. So this is just cleaning up that, you know, nuance of public in parking facilities, and will make the entirety of the ordinance read just parking facility for this use.
And when we do this, are we going to be done with dealing with parking facilities?
Hopefully, for now, yes.
Dealing with parking facility, I mean, I didn't realize we had that much of a problem.
I have, I asked Mark Miller to come tonight, and he is here. And I had a question about the DDA, if there's any issues, or what the DDA thinks about this. If you could address that, Ms. Miller.
So, thank you for the opportunity, Chair, to speak. So, as Katie mentioned, we, we do, we do meet weekly, and we brought this up for economic development purposes. We had a developer who was seeking clarification. In terms of, of the opinion of the DDA, the, the particular instance was just inside the DDA border, right on, right on the edge. As, as it was a very minor issue for, for downtown, we did not canvas the entire DDA board with this. But we have spoken to the chair, and felt like it was a minor enough issue that we didn't need to bring it up for, for everyone to weigh in on. So I think that, you know, moving forward, this could ease a lot of, or provide a lot of clarity for other developments. And so we would support that. And I'm sure that the, the board members would, would support that as well if we were to put that forward. But we haven't done that yet.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Miller?
Not today.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any questions from the public on this? None, okay. Move to discussions?
I'm good with them.
Arlene?
I mean, to accept what Katie did for us, yeah.
Arlene, anything?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, she's reading them.
Yeah.
We good?
I don't know.
Good, all right, Mick?
Yeah, I have no problem. I thought it was, like I said, it was an oversight to begin with, so.
Okay. We will close the public hearing, and it's at seven fifty-four, six, four, excuse me. Moving along to public comments on agenda-related items. Is there anyone in the audience that has a comment on the agenda tonight? Anything? None, going once, twice, okay, we're good. New business. Zoning amendment, removal of parking pub, or facility public. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion to removal of parking facility public.
Okay, motion by Mick, second by Roger. Any further discussion? None, please take the rule.
Mr. Slawinski? He's always not here, that's why. I'm so used to calling his name.
I'd be waiting a mile.
He looked at me, I'm like, you're right, Adam, he's gone. Mr. Smanski?
Yes.
Mr. Roberto?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitlock?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, next one is minor amendment to request for PUD. Okay, next one is minor amendment to request for PUD, one oh one South Lake Shore Drive. So if I could have the applicant come up, please, we could, excuse me.
Hi, my name's Tom Welling. I'm with Six P M Hospitality. And we're here tonight to ask for some relief on one of the requirements that was on the original submission, which is the balcony around the restaurant on the fifth floor. The reason being, well, there's several actually, but we've learned a lot since we've been out there for a year. One of the things that we realize is that the wind never stops out there and that the wind at the fifth floor is significantly higher than what you experience on the ground. So the useful amount of time that the balcony would be able to be used is significant. You're not going to want to be out on the balcony, you know, with a ten knot or fifty knot wind blowing your, you know, food and your hair and if you have any. So it's not going to be used as I think we all anticipated when, you know, we started down the road. Secondly, when we got to try to engineer it, it's a significant expense to engineer it structurally because it has both an uplift and a side load from the wind, which what we've experienced with just working on the guest room balconies would likely shake the side of the building. And it's really connected at the fourth floor versus even though it's a fifth floor balcony. So we anticipated over four hundred thousand dollars to construct that balcony. And with the minimal amount of use, it doesn't seem like it's a cost-effective addition to the property. When it comes to the economics of the property, when we started, our construction cost is up over thirty percent of what we anticipated. Some of that's due to the cost of material shortages, coming out of COVID. Lots of reasons, but it's up a lot. And we've gone through a number of significant challenges with the brand. The brand absolutely did not want that restaurant on the property. And it was a hard-fought battle. That cost us a lot. While it's likely going to be well worth it, it still costs a lot. We had to add a third elevator, which is about a hundred thousand dollars. What we didn't realize, what I personally didn't realize when I thought it was such a great idea to put it up there, is that if you look at the zoning, the building code, when you have a restaurant on the first floor, that's, you know, your first floor is a commercial space, but if you just have guest rooms above that, that's residential. So the fire code is a one-hour rating versus a two-hour rating. When you move the restaurant to the top floor, now the whole building is a two-hour rating. So that's hundreds of thousands of dollars of drywall that we had to add to rate the whole building for the two hours. That wasn't anticipated. Lost our lender twice throughout the project for various reasons. So, but we've not missed a beat. We were here in May of twenty-one to get approval from you all and since then, we are basically enclosed, the roof is on, windows are ninety-five percent in. We anticipate turning the heat on the inside next week. That will allow us to finish the interior during the winter. You can see scaffolding going up starting Monday, because we're going to start the exterior in small sections, because when the wind blows at about fifty, it's hard to keep that little tent on the exterior. But we're pushing through to try to be open by Memorial Day. So in lieu of the balcony, we've done what we call Juliet balconies. So on the west side, there's four of those. On the east side, there's two of those. Basically, a Juliet balcony is a slider where you, you know, you can open the door. So if your table's in front of it, you can open the door. And then just outside the door is a glass railing, so obviously so you don't fall out. But so it's not an outdoor balcony, but it would give you the same, a similar experience if the weather's right as to still try to get some of that ambiance, you know, in lieu of full-on balcony, so. In the package, there, we tried to highlight other things that have changed, which, like the third elevator wasn't on the original submission. So we tried to kind of highlight things that are different. You know, we reconfigured, you know, a storage room, an electrical room, things that I would, primarily came from the brand, that the, the front entry was too close to the elevator. They wanted, so that slid down a couple of feet and then we, they wanted the air conditioner or condensers moved. So they had a long list of nightmares, things they needed. So anyway, but the most significant thing is the balcony, and we talked about it, you know, you know, initial reviews. And so we wanted to get that in front of you. We're looking at the exterior bar. We have a fixture that's been given to us. It's got powered louvers, you know, roof on it, and you can put the sides on it. It's about the same size as what we have. So it would look a little different than what's there, but we're not really ready yet to know that that's going to work. So for now, it's, the bar is outside, it is what it is, so. But I know there's, when we talk about it in town, everybody's, we're, you know, because we like about the balcony, we're not doing the restaurant, yeah, we're still doing the restaurant. We just would like to eliminate that exterior balcony.
And if we say don't?
That would be a bad day for me, Roger.
I mean, I'm just asking, that's all.
Yeah.
He'd have to pull his hair out.
Yeah, right. Stunt your growth to make your hair fall out, right? If we had to do it, it would be a significant setback to the project, both financially. You cannot imagine what it's taken to get this project. Pete has, you know, to try and raise the equity, to have two lenders pull out on us, to have our investors step up and keep this thing going is borderline miracle, in my opinion.
Really? Well, you knew the cost. You knew the cost was going to go up. I couldn't believe you're building it when you did, but anyhow, you guys took it. The cost, well, it should be coming down a little bit, but.
It's at least leveling off.
Yeah, it's leveling a little, but.
Now, the upside of what's happened with COVID is the room rates have also gone up.
Oh, sure.
That's the only reason the business case, you know, still works.
Let's hope so.
So.
But will they stay up? That's, you know.
Let me make sure I understand. So it's still up there, it's just not completely open air?
So the restaurant is unchanged.
Okay.
Right.
But what was drawn was there was a door where you would leave the restaurant to go out to a balcony that would go, went around the outside.
Right, right.
So we'd like to eliminate that. You can, but from the inside, you can still open a slider.
Okay.
You know.
Still have access to the weather.
The open air side, to the view, to.
Right. Safety, that, that you can't, there's enough to protect someone from.
Yeah. So Juliet balconies, if you were to look at them in Europe, it's basically spindle railings.
Right.
I can pull up a picture if you'd like. So the span, how, how much beach view is up there right now?
Uh, well, it's basically unchanged, but there's, there's the equivalent of six sliders on the west side.
Okay, so it's still providing a significant view space. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, if you.
Is that it?
Yeah, these are some samples of Juliet balconies, how Tom described, typically they have like a iron. This bigger image is an example of a glass one.
Yeah.
So it gives the, kind of the, you know,
Yeah.
illusion of a balcony that you don't actually step out onto.
Right, right.
An inverted balcony, if you will, yeah.
Right. The view, we've had, Marlene was out and Mick was out. We had them up on the fifth floor before we put the ripstop in, you know, so we could heat it. The view is stunning.
Now, there's a view.
I actually have, I have just a couple pictures from the inside of the building. I don't know if we'll be able to see the view. I have some great ones for my phone that I need to send to you guys, so.
Yeah. So, so my, my comment is this, and maybe I'm wrong, but when we discussed all of the requirements that we had for this hotel, having a wraparound balcony was not our call.
It was nice.
We never made this a requirement for the, the project to go forward. What we sold to our community and what we feel was important was that we had a hotel property that was open to the whole public for the first time on that piece of property.
Right.
And, and you complied with that. So, I mean, yeah, it looked really nice and I thought it would be cool to go out there in the worst possible storm of the year and go out there with my, my orange parka, but I can live without.
Only you would.
You can still see it.
Yeah. Well, they're great, well, they're people out, like the night sky people, they'd be out there. They're not right.
When the architects draw things, you know, we, as developers, sometimes get caught up in the moment. Yeah, I mean, I think back to last summer with the Chamber cruise on that boat down there, we went out on Lake Michigan. It was one of those nights. I mean, it was a chambered night. There was no wind, it was eighty, and that's, that, yeah, I mean, in my mind, that's the balcony. I want to be out on the balcony. And then there was one other night that year that happened.
Yeah.
So that's two nights out of three hundred and sixty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Tom, the only trade-off that I, that I'd suggest is that at least you look at the information that was provided and see if there's anything from, from your side that you can do that would not necessarily be
Cost.
costly, but could, could improve our night sky.
Right, well, so we, the building code requires a lot of what she explained. So all our parking lights are downlights.
They're downlights, I remember that.
That's, it's, it's, you know, it's a building code issue.
Yeah.
The color is not, but in our agreement, we also agreed to dim our sign. So I, you know, I kind of feel like, I mean, I totally understand what she was saying. Having been in the Navy and been at sea at night,
Yeah.
it's amazing what you see that you don't in town. So I, I totally get that. But I, I think that our light level is, is, well, it's within regulation. We did have to submit a lighting plan, so our light can't bleed off from the property.
Right.
Well, I think the one thing I'd add too, if you go out there right now, our parking lot lights are on
They're on.
for safety and security and theft.
Right, right.
But there, right now, they're at a hundred percent. They're plugged in. They're not in our lighting control panel where we have control over it because it's, we don't have that even in Sunday. So, so if you drive by today, like our parking lot lights, as you see them today, is worst-case scenario from a parking lot standpoint, because we have no control over, over them today.
Yeah.
Six months or less, we'll have control over them, so.
Yeah.
You said, you said June and I'm sitting there going, oh, shoot, we're.
So the, the lighting will be dimmable and on the lake side, they're dimmable again, correct?
There's no sign.
There is no sign.
Oh, that's right, you removed that at five o'clock.
But the property lighting, let's say your lower ground lighting will be dimmable.
Yeah, and like even our walkway lighting along the left side of the building, there's some planners there that were trying to figure out exactly what that is and we found some stuff where the planners, which I have fear of them getting blown over in the storm, you know. We found some cool lighting where we'll light the pathway and not the area.
Well, the sand is going to blow.
At the fire pit, whatever, you want the experience and that's what we want to.
You get them too low, that sand will cover everything up, down, once it blows.
There's sand out there?
A little bit, a little bit.
Well, half inch on that first floor right now.
Bill's struggling out of, we're going to deal with that.
Lots of vacuums, double shifts.
Beautiful from, to the west, up to the lake and even to the north and east.
I would think so.
You can see down the channel and down, even buildings downtown. It was remarkable.
I was quite pleased with the view from the east side downtown. Several of those rooms on the northeast look right down the channel.
Right down the river channel, sure, I'll bet you hate it.
Down the river.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, you know, there's always a backside, so you, you know, you wonder about the rooms on the backside, what's the view going to be like, and I, I think people are going to be very pleased with those.
I don't think you're going to have a bad room as far as the view.
Well, when they start bringing the fish off to pier and cleaning them in the rooms, you'll find, you'll find out.
Not so much the view.
Burt's head in the garbage can and.
Well, I can't wait to go through it. Hopefully next week, we can.
Next week?
The sixth, yeah.
They get the heat on, at this point. You get the heat on.
You're waiting on consumers, so that's how it works.
We have codes.
You don't have your light yet. I'm from downstate, I say Edison, but consumers, you're still waiting for power, you're still using generators.
Right, so on the upside, they were at the site this week. They set the transformer and the wires in place. And now there's a different crew that comes out to terminate the wires and hook them up. They said by the end of this week, probably early next week. And then we already have the gas on, so as soon as we get the power, then we're turning the heat on.
We're at the power right now, which just doesn't quite have enough giddy up for all the construction.
Yeah, well, take your time, take your time, I mean, you know.
Has all the water been run, the, the new main? Do it now?
It's permitted. We have the pipe and the fittings are due like any day, so they're going to start the twelfth. And we're going to run the water down past the hotel. And then we're going to finish in the spring, because right now, the city's working on easements that are required to get us up the hill.
Mm-hmm.
We don't have those yet.
Okay.
But that will get, you know, the start of it yet this year.
That will help a lot with the, with the dead ends.
Dead end, Mark, you're talking about that with Don?
Dead end on First Street and Harbor Drive.
Harbor Drive.
Yeah.
You have two dead ends.
Yeah, okay, yeah, you're right.
Well, I think too, you know, when, when we really started talking about the park, it was beautiful. But when you really sat back and looked at, you know, I don't want to go down the road of lighting fixtures again because we, we bet one pretty good tonight, but we started looking at the lighting fixtures down there and the pavement and everything else, that's when Jeff got involved. It's like, yeah, this, this could use some more love. You know, they did a great job with the roundabout and all of that streetscape, but now it's like, okay, with the rest of it. And so, you know, I think everything going on, the coordination between Pioneer and Tom on our team, as well as Jeff with Bill and Katie and everybody else, and Mark's been a huge asset. So, I mean, overall, the team is pulling the rope in the same direction and, which makes it a lot more enjoyable and a lot easier to get stuff done if we're all willing to come to the table and find a solution that's working.
Right.
So, so if there's anything, a thumbs up and a thank you to everybody involved, both yourself and, and the staff, so.
I do like the Juliet, I mean, you know, the balcony's gone, which, you know, here and there, but the Juliet balconies are nice, so that'll add a lot.
Yeah, and as long as they're secure, that nobody can, well, you know, safety, that's.
That's not good for anybody.
Well, anybody can do anything if they want to, but.
True.
I mean, yeah, yeah, okay. So what do we need, a motion?
Well, is there any more questions?
Oh, any more questions?
Yeah.
No, I don't think so.
Roger, you don't have anything?
Well, I mean, the poor man's.
Five o'clock.
Yeah, yeah, I think, Mark, were you the only one left who, has everyone else seen the Lake Shore?
No.
Roger, you hadn't gone yet. Okay, Shelley, you hadn't gone yet either, okay.
Cancelled the day that I was supposed to go.
There was more than I thought who were slated for that last one, so yeah, we'll make sure we get all you guys.
Yeah, when do you get the heat, though?
I think they've tried. I think they've tried to kill this old lady, I had to walk five flights up.
I would say that's the only caveat, right?
I'm up there.
The elevator still isn't working, so, uh...
And the thing is, they won't...
But not only, we did stop on the third floor to take a break, so we did do that.
Hey, I, I made it.
Um, and the elevator company will, basically will not even schedule you until you have permanent power, so it's one of those...
Yeah.
I'm just teasing.
Yeah, it'll, I'm confident it'll be there in time, but if you ask Phil who's, if you haven't met Phil too, our, our project superintendent from Pioneer, uh, this is the second property we've constructed with him, he is an absolutely fantastic guy, um, stopped down there and sat with Phil, um, he can show you around anytime, but, um, he, uh, if, if you asked him if there's one thing in this project that keeps you up at night from missing that, you know, Memorial Day weekend, what is it? Yeah. It's not that we, it's not that we don't have them coming, it's just, again, labor is all.
Have you had a problem with workers, you had any workers?
Been blessed with some pretty good subs.
Good, good there, 'cause I mean...
Working the workmanship's on point, too, which is most important to us.
Are you working, you're not working union scale, Don, are you? I didn't think so.
Lowest bid wins in state.
Yeah, yeah.
Have you, have you started advertising for hotel staff?
So, we are actively trying to recruit the general manager currently, um, I meant to ask Lee where that's at, but we've been with the Holiday Inn, kind of two ships in the night, so.
Got a couple of interviews for the GM, I have strong candidates, um, and that's the progression, you start with the GM.
Yeah, sure.
And then, you let them work to hire the, their staff.
Yeah, right, right.
Could be easy, well, I shouldn't say easy, in today's, in today's market, so.
First of the year, anybody know anything about HR here?
See, they, there again, you're gonna bring them in, they're gonna need housing, right? These people, you...
Well, I mean, ideally, we'd try to find somebody locally, but if...
But I mean, there, we're in a situation now where we don't have the housing.
Right.
To bring people in.
And, and at the end of the day, um, too, it's, it's finding the right candidate that's gonna embrace the property and the community.
Yeah.
Um, and, and stuff, so, um, I know Lee's talked to a number of people locally, she's talked to some people from downstate, people from up north and...
Well, I'm sure you get the best candidate, it's an investment for you guys.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you get a bad one, you're, like anything else, the, the places is good as a manager, I'll tell you. You can go to any Holiday Inn, but it's only as good as the person running that particular Holiday Inn.
Yeah, I agree.
And I'd say that's enough for me, Larry.
You sure? Anymore?
Nah.
Strike tired, eh?
Yeah.
Marlene?
I have nothing, they answered my question, I just wanna make sure everything, if being they have those sliders, that everything was secure and safe, and that was my biggest...
Okay, very good. Shelley?
Nothing.
Mick?
Only to say that, you know, I am so pleased and thankful that, uh, that your group, uh, decided to invest in Manistee and has, has stuck through, you know, obviously difficult times, and, you know, you can just look around the whole country and you see that it's, it's been a challenge, so, thank you for, for investing in Manistee, and, and I think, uh, all of us will, will benefit from, uh, this hotel being down at the beach, so, looking forward to it.
Gentlemen, we still looking at the basic idea?
Mm-hmm.
This picture? Yeah, that's, yeah, okay.
Yeah, coincidentally, the waterproofing that's on now is pretty close to that blue.
I wondered.
Not the exterior, but that's...
Yeah, I wondered.
Oh, yeah.
We'll give you an idea what the color's gonna be like.
Yeah, yeah, should be all right. Looks, oh, there you go.
Well, I don't go by it every day, but, but once every couple of weeks, and it's, it's amazing the progress that you...
Yeah.
You and your team have been making with, with this project.
Actually, we should be part of ourselves. We brought it in here, we really put the request, we could've said...
We did a little legwork for about twelve hours.
Each day.
Each day.
Each day.
But we're, we're, we're not the ones slinging the hammer, though, Roger, so, um, but it's, it's amazing.
You guys get to take credit when the heat's out, you know, when it's warm, when it's a worldly weekend.
Hey, that's my birthday, too.
At the ribbon cutting.
Even better, we gotta get a big cake.
Yeah, there it is, we'll cut the ribbon.
So, um, you know, it, you know, like we've all said, it's just, thank you for coming to Manistee and making the investment in this community, and there's so many people that are looking forward to this.
Thank you, yeah, there are, pleased.
Thank you so much.
Make it happen, don't run us out of talk.
Oh, well, let them try.
Yeah, let them try, yeah, sure.
All right.
See that?
Um, so, is there a motion to accept the minor amendment?
I'll make that motion.
The PUD.
Sure, there you go.
Motion by Mick, second by Roger.
I'll second.
Shelley will.
Or Shelley, any other, um, discussions? None, please take a roll.
Commissioner Smansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yeah.
Sheriff Whitlock?
Yes.
Prove.
Yeah, what about Bob?
Bob, Bob, Bob.
And moving along to old business, the street vacation, and I'm just looking for the address on this.
Um, yes, it is 114 Pine.
114 Pine.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so I wanted to bring this back before you, uh, per discussion with the city attorney and some discussion with the city manager, I did not entirely realize, which this is something that I'll make sure to look for, or look for in the future, that the two, so, Second Street is actually in two different subdivisions, so, when vacating Second Street, it will not be split between two property owners, it will only go to the property to the north, because Second Street is within the subdivision to the property to the north. So, I know from what Mr. Saylor had described, that that was the intention anyway, um, and so I'm glad that ultimately, you know, it would work out in his favor in this case, but due to that formality, uh, the city attorney felt it was most appropriate for this to come back before the commission and make sure they understood that the, if the vacation request was approved, that it would truly only go to the property owner to the north. Another thing the city manager had posed, and this could ultimately be up to council, is if the planning commission had thought about only approving with vacating the entirety of the street, um, I know the city doesn't intend to use the entirety of the street, but ultimately, it's up to you guys if you'd want the applicant, uh, to canvas the rest of the, the property owners on that street, to see if they would be accepting of the entire vacation, or we could leave that to city council to be posed to them, and they could request that action as well. So, I wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that discussion and that that is an option to, you know, ask for the whole street to be vacated and that that property will only go to the northern property owners.
So, is there, what is the committee's thought about that?
I, I have no problem with that, that was how it was explained when, when we heard at the original time, was that it was just going to be his portion of the property, and the other, the other owner apparently didn't want anything to do with it.
Yeah, well, initially, we, we had thought that he would have to give permission, but, um, Daniel had said that, you know, he talked to, it's Lee Trucks is his southern neighbor, and he said, Lee's just gonna deed it to me anyway, you know, Lee didn't really want that property, so, yeah, ultimately, it did work out, and I was glad for that, um...
But why?
Since I had missed that.
Why didn't it work out to the people to the south?
Um, because the, the southern half of Second Street is actually in a different platted subdivision.
Okay.
So, when we're dealing with road vacations, uh, road vacation requests...
Right.
Things get sticky with parcel combinations, uh, and such, when they're in different subdivisions, so we wouldn't be able to add an area that's in a different subdivision, combine that with a parcel.
Oh, I...
Yeah, so the southern side is in a...
They took that street, they took it all from that parcel.
Well, the street has always been platted, but it was part of the platted subdivision of the northern side of the street. Mm-hmm, so this...
So, once you vacate that street, it goes to the people to the north?
To the north, yep, 'cause that is the subdivision it's contained in.
And because...
And I didn't entirely realize that with initially putting this through, a lot of times, we'll see these, uh, vacation requests in alleys, and my mind was kind of there where it has to be in the same subdivision, no matter what.
Oh, yeah, I see.
So, yeah, with this being an unplatted road, it just was an oversight on my part that George had brought to my attention, but, you know, as we've been saying, ultimately, it does work out with this particular request.
Well, let's clean up your act, okay, so it doesn't...
I know, right, gosh, I'll make sure it doesn't happen again, Roger.
So, do we need to make another motion?
I would request another motion, um, and that can be the same motion that was made, but now the commission just has a full understanding, as do I, of what we are approving here.
Right, 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 right.
Well, I think I made the first motion, so I'll make that motion again.
Okay.
Uh, but that it wouldn't, that all the property would go to the owner on the north.
Thank you.
So, are we gonna look into the, the vacating the whole street, or is this just this particular parcel?
Um, it does not sound like that's contained in your motion, but this does still have to go to city council for approval.
I let city council decide whether or not that's...
Okay, 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 okay. I don't know.
Excuse us, we have a meeting here.
Well, excuse me. I was just telling Shelley that my mother grew up in that house.
Nice.
So...
Yeah.
Your mother grew up in that house.
Tell you some other stuff.
Shelley's mother grew up in that house?
No, my mom.
Oh, your mother, okay.
Sure, me.
I really grew up in Delaware.
There you go.
So, with this, with everything said...
Right.
Is there a motion, one way?
Got a motion on the floor.
You made the motion.
I did.
I forgot.
I made the original one, so I said, I'll just re, remake the motion, but to say that all the property will be included to the property to the north.
Okay, right, so, is, and Marlene's a second, any further discussion? None, take a roll.
Commissioner Smansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Sheriff Whitlock?
Yes. Approved, thank you. Public comments, communication, is there anyone in the audience left that would have anything? Mr. Gabowski, do you have anything?
God, he's watching.
All right, staff reports?
Um, I have just a couple of updates for you guys, um, so, I know last month I had just provided some of the updates that are provided to city council, so I pulled a couple of things here, uh, the, this is getting back into the end of October, but, um, the bird scooters were picked up on November eighteenth, it sounds like that was a good run for that company, and they are interested in returning next year.
True.
So, that's good news, uh, I'm sure everyone's been seeing, we've had quite a bit of road work going on, on Quincy and Cleveland, there were some construction barrels and signage on Memorial Drive that should've been cleaned up by now, um...
About the leaves?
I think that everyone got their fill of that at city council, did they not?
I've Jimmy heard about the leaves.
Oh, and then, the Hampton Inn tour, I just wanted to recap that we will be doing a tour on December sixth, I'm thinking five-thirty, I'm gonna finally confirm that with Tom, but the five-thirty was the time for the last one, so, plan for five-thirty on December sixth, um, and this was an interesting fact that was in the updates, for population growth, uh, with tourism, there's an article that Networks Northwest shared indicating that Manistee County's total population swells from twenty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-eighteen in January to fifty-four thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-four by the August peak, according to this report, and permanent residents make up the majority of the county's population in winter, eighty-nine percent in January, but by summer, permanent residents make up less than fifty percent of the total population. Overnight visitors account for roughly thirty-five percent in August, and eighteen percent are part-time residents, so I just thought that was very interesting.
Supposed to have housing from twenty-one thousand in January to fifty-eight thousand in August.
Fifty-four.
Or fifty-four thousand, where are we supposed to get the housing for these people?
Yeah, it's definitely a challenge.
It's a challenge.
So, those are just a couple of the updates, oh, and the city is still, uh, working towards a blight elimination grant, they're working with the county land bank to identify some properties and utilize some funds through them, so, that is good news. And then, lastly, I did have an item that I wanted to bring before you guys, so, with, um, our monthly meetings, Mark, Miller and I, we have been including the new housing coordinator, Tracy, and one of her goals with the housing action plan in the city is to make duplexes a permitted use, and we were thinking that if the planning commission felt it was appropriate, we could hold a public hearing in January for this to help alleviate some of the, you know, barriers that exist in zoning for duplexes specifically. And Tracy did provide for me, out of the memo that, um, was out of the zoning recommendations from the housing action plan approved by city council in two thousand and nineteen, the comment was for duplexes, currently duplexes are permitted through special use, special use permit in all residential zoning districts except R1, duplexes support increased density and can increase the supply of rental housing in single-family neighborhoods, the city should consider allowing duplexes as a use by right in all residential zoning districts except R1. So, that is a goal, and I think it would be, you know, if the commission feels it's appropriate, it would most definitely be appropriate to hold a public hearing on that and pursue amending the ordinance for that.
My only suggestion would be to have the seed planted before, in other words, have, have an article, uh, in the newspaper addressing what that means, so that it doesn't become twisted by the media before we even get a chance to address it.
Okay, yeah.
And, and, and again, I think she could put a nice article together saying, you know, how, this is, you know, a housing issue, and what does it mean, and who does it impact, uh, and, and kind of, you know, give a groundwork to the general community, and then we have the, a, a meeting, so, that it isn't all coming at us.
At them. Yeah.
Right.
Well, we can't get them to come to a meeting even a paper, let alone having a meeting with...
Well, we had no, we had no problem getting people to dial in when we were doing the Hampton Inn, so...
No, we didn't, yeah.
So, would the commission feel it's appropriate to hold a public hearing in January if the housing coordinator can get an article in the paper, uh, prior to the January meeting, and we'll get the ball rolling on that?
Couple of weeks, we in favor of that, yeah, so that, so there's some opportunity for feedback, so that we have an idea of where the challenges are.
Let the people chew on it for a week or so.
Okay, yeah, I will get in contact with Tracy and make sure that's feasible, and as long as we get everything rolling, um, you guys can expect a public hearing on that in January.
Yeah.
Great, great.
Yeah.
Thank you, that is all I had for staff updates.
Nancy, do you have anything?
I don't.
Come on, Nancy, tell us something.
Oh, I talk a lot in the office, but I'm, I'm all tired of it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did have one more thing, I had sent, I had had Nancy send out the email, Roger, and I had talked about this earlier for the Citizens Planner webinar, they're doing a deal, the sixty dollar for all six classes, so, um, talking with Roger, I haven't coordinated any training for this commission yet, but I'm thinking I need to get in touch with Heather, our city clerk, so just let me know if that's something that you guys would wanna sign up for, and I'll get in touch with her and figure that out, okay? and I'll get in touch with her and figure that out, okay?
Yeah, send us a...
Well, you... We all, we need it, so I would just move ahead.
You get the sixty, you get the six hours that we need.
Yes.
For your master planner.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And then we would be able to use them as our discretion, whether one wants to watch it at one time or we all watch together.
Yep.
But I, from that, uh, so Katie's gonna check with the city to see...
I didn't get anything on that, but I would like to upgrade my...
Okay, yeah, we'll make sure to include you on that, Marlene.
Okay.
Member discussion? Roger?
Yeah, no, we're still working on the, uh, oh, the hopper, I asked you about the pizza place, and you said they're working on the, the other half of that bank.
Yep.
Where the pizza place is, and I see lights on up at the old hospital. Is there some movement in there or anything?
I haven't heard from anyone on that, I did have some very initial inquiries on the old hospital, nothing definitive, but I have not received any phone calls or anything on that in a little bit.
Somebody must maintain it, though, or something.
Yeah.
'Cause I see lights on in there the other night, and I was, I was surprised, I really felt my...
Yeah, there could be some movement that just hasn't crossed my desk yet.
I hate, I just hate to see, okay, you know, then they got the little one on the civic club, the old civic club building,
Mm-hmm.
that's sitting empty, which is part of that organization.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just, all right, nothing?
I had two things on the storage units, I know they've been working up there, there's still a lot of erosion.
Yeah.
Coming up there, and I just wondered, I know it's too late now for planting and stuff, but I'd like to see something up with them, because, you know, we gave them that with the thing that they would finish the first things first before the second part came in and stuff, and I don't think all those have been met.
I'll have to check on, with Glenn and look at their file. I'll look at their file and see what, what they have and have not accomplished, I'll send Glenn out there.
I saw the, they were actually working this week, building that retaining wall on the left end.
They've been doing that for a while.
Well, but they were, they were actually working again, so, and I don't know how far around and down, but there's still obviously gonna be a lot of landscaping, they still have a big part of that hill that has to be somehow rounded out, but...
Yeah. And what is going on with the tribe and the first part of River Street? I mean, they tore everything down and then it's a standstill, and I, I don't know when their permits, if they filed for some, if they're expired, or...
They've received zoning approval, from what I understand, the tribe is at, Little River Holdings is at a standstill with the project. They're reevaluating and reassessing due to costs, and I'm sure many other factors that, you know, we can speculate on, but from, from my standpoint, they have their zoning approval, but I, you know, I can't say that they're, that that is going to come to fruition. It seems like there may be some changes that will come, so we're just gonna kinda have to hold tight on that one, mm-hmm.
I have a, oh, you're not on that anymore.
You can understand with 30 to 40% increase in building costs.
That's what these...
And, and interest rates went from three to seven percent.
Seven, yeah.
So, if you're doing a pro forma, it doesn't take much to figure out that your profits are probably
Yeah.
zeroed, and you're not gonna get anybody to loan you money.
You're getting material, it's hard.
Right, well, exactly, I mean, you can't get wired to wire a home, let alone to, for another building, so...
That's true. That's the truth.
That's it.
Shelley?
Nothing.
Mick?
Just a reminder that, uh, the, the world-famous Victorian sleigh bell parade in Christmas weekend started today. So, you have all kinds of opportunities between now and Sunday to take advantage of a good old-fashioned Manistee Christmas.
There's no snow.
You don't need snow.
Yes, you need snow.
It's so overrated.
Ah, I suppose you're gonna get it wrong with all...
We'll have some by Saturday, I'm sure, so...
Will we? All right.
And, and, and big, uh, big surprise at the parade this year.
Big surprise?
First, a first for our parade this year.
Uh-oh, ooh, nobody can know.
Outside, outside of the fact that we have 14 equestrian units, so, we have more horsepower than NASCAR.
We should have a rodeo. All right, what are we waiting?
Mick? Not, not gonna take much time, so it's gonna be...
Take your time.
Power.
Take your time.
Um, the light, I don't know what we can do on this, but this is driving me nuts when I go down, go on the highway. The tobacco shop on Cypress Street?
Yeah.
The far north light on the building is just flashing.
The, the new Sweetwater one, or is...
It's the whatever.
Cowboy Tobacco or whatever it was.
What is it, hot, hot tobacco, or whatever the season is now.
Seventh Street, Seventh and...
Sixth.
Okay, yeah, so the one right on 31?
The one that we went through, went through and through.
The one that had the really bright lights and all, they're flashing.
So, they, they have their security lighting up on top, and the far...
It's really bright.
North is just flashing like crazy.
Okay.
Oh, there you go.
I'll look into that, I'm gonna go drive by it when we leave here, I'll go look.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I keep thinking it's a cop car.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause they can't have, that's, that's getting into like a public health and safety.
Yeah, that would be a public safety.
He keeps pulling over for no reason. It's embarrassing, so...